I would like to reconvene to public session at 7:03 PM. And if we could stand salute the flag in moment of silence, please keep Florida in your mind tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Recommend approving tonight's agenda as submitted.
Submit.
First, Mrs. Isler, second, Mr. Nichols. Roll call vote. Mrs. Isler?
Approve.
Mr. Nichols?
Approve.
Ms. Ralph?
Approve.
And Mrs. Pew?
Approve.
So approved. Recommend to approve the minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting of August 14th.
Submit.
Second.
First, Mrs. Isler, second, Mr. Nichols. Roll call vote. Mrs. Isler?
Approve.
Mr. Nichols?
Approve.
Ms. Ralph?
Approve.
And Mrs. Pew?
Abstain.
So approved. Recommend to approve the minutes of the Board of Education regular meeting of September the 18th, 2024.
Submit.
Second.
First, Mrs. Isler, second, Mr. Nichols. Roll call vote. Mrs. Isler?
Approve.
Mr. Nichols?
Approve.
Ms. Ralph?
Abstain.
Ms. Ralph abstains and Mrs. Pew?
Approve.
So approved. Recognition of guests. Do we have any guests?
No guests on.
No guests. Okay, next. Any communication and announcements? No? Okay, public participation. First, we have Mr. Thomas Turnbull. And I'd like to read the board policy. You will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Persons wishing to speak for a longer period must arrange for a place on the board's agenda. Persons wishing to be placed on the agenda shall inform the superintendent of that desire in writing and the topic no later than three, four working days prior to the day of the regular meeting of the board, which normally is the third Wednesday of the month. Members of the public are expected to conduct themselves responsibly and with due respect in an effort to maintain a high standard of conduct. The board president will have authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who does not adhere to the above rules. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that all their requests may be directed to the board, action and answers to questions must be deferred pending board consideration. Please state your name and Ms. Isler will start the clock.
Mr. Turnbull. First of all, thank everybody that's here to support me. Got my back, I'll have your back, I promise today. I'm gonna start by saying, first of all, I've spent $3,100 of my personal money in the last three weeks. Wanted to hire a attorney for a lawyer, another $600 for a private investigation firm, tomorrow I gotta get another $600 for another tenant house. Just to let you know what I'm doing. You all tonight, I'm gonna be the teachers and you're gonna be the students. So I think you might wanna take notes so you learn a little something. You wanna come back for the next school board meeting? You'll know what you're talking about, okay? So you can get back to your lawyer. The same one that's up with having problems right now. Has it done too good for you anyway, what I found out? So you might wanna hire a new lawyer. First of all, you need to know codes. So I'm gonna give you some codes so you can study them and go look them up and do a little homework. First day code, 6923, competitive bids for any work that's done in this school district. 6931, you must advertise that to the public. 6913, all bids must be open in the public. Sunshine laws, anybody know sunshine laws? I'll take that as a note, of course, do your homework. The public has the right to review all financial records and all documents of the board. The board must respond within 12 days of that request, per law. Board decisions must be made on the public's behalf and not on our superintendent's behalf. They do not represent the superintendent, they represent us. We put him in office. He didn't put him in office, we did. He works for this community, they do. Administrative law, 14612. That's the new alcohol laws. Gambling laws, let's talk about that, Sean. So in our meeting that I recorded, with your permission, I mentioned to you that my daughter asked if she could have a basta bingo for her senior class. She asked you personally. You told her no, on the voice of your lawyer, said that was gambling. What'd you have, was PDA, what'd she ask you? And I'm gonna repeat this like I'm on a recording over there. What do you call 50/50 tickets to soulmates or sporting events? I give you $5, you give me a ticket with the number on it and we'll throw a number and guess what, you get the money. Sounds like a lottery to me, it's gonna stop. I'm gonna make sure of it. They can have all the phone rates, like everybody else, a chicken barbecue, whatever, that's phone rate. Not legal gambling on the school property. Now, I wanna get to some of the violations. First amendment rights violated. Under law, on July 8th, all negative remarks were removed immediately during...
Three minutes. Mr. Turnbull, your time's up.
That was three minutes?
You timed it.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and remove my request list for 10 minutes, Sean. Don't get it to me, find out what happens. My lawyer will be here. My lawyer will be here.
Mr. Turnbull, please, time is up.
Did you violate the DIA?
Next, we have...
The secretary of education.
Next, we have...
Sir, when you're done with the podium, your time is over.
Your time's almost over.
If we gather you again, you'll be asked to leave, you'll be forcibly removed.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Ms. Donna Ward. I will read the board policy on speaking. You have up to three minutes to speak. Persons wishing to speak for a longer period must arrange for a place on the board's agenda. Persons wishing to be placed on the agenda shall inform the superintendent of that desire in writing and the topic no later than three, four working days prior to the day of the regular meeting of the board, which is normally the third Wednesday of the month. Members of the public are expected to conduct themselves responsibly and with due respect in an effort to maintain a high standard of conduct. The board president will have authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who does not adhere to the above rules. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that all their requests may be directed to the board. Action and answers to questions must be deferred pending board consideration. Would you please state your name and the time will begin?
Donna Ward. All right, I'm a horrible public speaker. I watch all the negative stuff on Facebook and it just eats me up from inside. I personally know these people as friends and as my bosses. And there is nobody that I would rather have in my corner than these people sitting up here. They love your children, they love this school district and they do everything, everything for these children in this school district. We all make mistakes, oh my gosh, I myself have made several mistakes. Thank goodness they're not held over my head every second. I am thankful that I feel if I make a mistake, that I am gonna be able to have five people, six people there to lift me up, want me to do better, you know? Because they know I am here in this district because I love these children and I want nothing but the best for them. I'm on the inside, you know? It's easy to look from the outside and judge people and, you know, think we're all doing it wrong. I have been in every building in this school and from the custodians who are walking, loving these children up, you know, to the teachers who, you know, are doing everything for our kids. For our superintendent who, you know, we all fall short sometimes. He loves these children and he loves this job and he loves this town. And we need to know that every single person out there is doing the best, not only for their children and our children, but for our teachers. But I do, I just want, I'm sorry you get all this, you know, hard for a job that's not paid for. I mean, you're doing none of this except for your love for Laurel and the love for our children. And I do, I want, I know several of us here who are on the inside know exactly, you know, the job that you do and we applaud you for that job. But I do, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm blessed that I have grandchildren coming through this school district and being here in this show.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Just for everyone's anticipation, we have an official timekeeper and it's Mrs. Isler.
Yes.
You have three more seconds.
Forty-three seconds.
Thirty-four.
Twenty-three. She was down in her last minute.
Okay, superintendent remarks at this time.
Good evening, everybody. I have a goal tonight to acknowledge and address and affirm some things that I feel need to be done. First of all, let's start with acknowledgement. Our last board meeting, there were events at the last board meeting that had a criticism that was primarily directed towards our Board of Education. The chief complaint was holding me accountable for events that I took place in, took part in on May 11th and when I received a DUI after leaving a fundraiser that teach world had. I need you to know that sometimes secrecy is not avoidance, all right? What our Board of Education was doing was a legal necessity. They were protecting the privacy, rights and laws personally, namely me. Their silence is an act of compliance, not of complicity. And I mean, everybody understands that. So I heard me when I saw five good men and women take the blood from a speaker. Will truth, they upheld the highest standards of accountability for myself. Now again, legally they can't share that. But I can share what they cannot and I plan on doing that. On May 15th, there was an addendum to my contract for employment. I received this four days after the event. I won't read it all to you, but I'll read the high points of it. It says that I am, the board would abstain from prompt issuance of termination until July 1st. There would be no notice of termination sent to me until July 1st. But between May 15th and July 1st, if I wanted to be considered reinstated, I would do the following things. I would seek alcohol treatment. I would complete anger management treatment. Any further alcohol-related matters under good and just cause would prove my dismissal. And I must take sick days, 60, to do this. I could have taken F M L A, but I did not. Sixty sick days has a retirement cash out value for me of about $20,000. If I did all these things, when I came back on July 1st, I may have a chance to be reinstated based on how far I progressed in this time period. So over the weeks, I kept a treatment and good faith documentation. And I kept it religiously. And I separated. The weeks got covered, the highlights started anew. And every week I would send this to the board to let them know my progress on the outlines, condition of reinstatement, possible reinstatement. And I did that without fail. I won't read all of that to you either, but between May 17th and June 28th, I accomplished the following things. That people admire, again, it's illegal for the Board of Educators, but I do it full-heartedly and supported them. I attended 13 hours of Alcoholics Anonymous, which I still attend. I attended and finished eight weeks of anger management through Code Recovery and Salisbury. And because my B B behavioral health therapy therapist was not available for a month, I started SUN behavioral outpatient treatment, of which I spent four half-days there. I also entered the DUI for suspended program, of which there are 16 hours of part of counseling there, which I finished, and two more AA sessions. I just wanna bring up something. When I was at the SUN game, I was there for about five minutes and I was like, this is not for me. There was about 25 people in the room, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, meth addiction, heroin, alcohol, anger addiction, all kinds of addictions and there was one teacher. And as I sat in there, I was like, I'm in the wrong place. And I said, I'll just wait for my therapist to become available and I'll get out of here. And I sat there and still small boys came to me and said, you know, maybe you might learn something, give it a chance. And a lady started speaking and she started crying when she was sharing because another shooting had happened at Laurel that weekend. And she was tired of happening in the community. And I was like, oh my God, of all the places in the world, this is going on right now. So at break, I went over to her and she just put her hand on mine and said, it's okay, I know who you are, I'm glad you're here. And we just sat and talked a little bit during break. Another time during a break, or a part of it. I was partnered up with someone who was an attractive woman. She looked about 10 years older than me, but she was probably 15 years younger than me. What I'm getting at is drugs had taken a toll on her. She was athletic. And I kind of, just like, what in the world is she doing here? As I got talking to her, she lived in power homes at Georgetown. If you guys are familiar with those, they're like those little huts that are fabricated. It's about 12 square feet living space. And I was talking to her, she shared her story with me, that she went to a private school, lived in all her life. Powering. My point is, if you don't think it can happen to you, if you don't think evil can reach out and touch you and touch your family, touch yourself, you kill yourself. So I'm fortunate, I'm very fortunate for my time in Minnesota. Moving on, my sobriety and my faith. I haven't had a drop of alcohol since May 11th, that's nearly five months ago. And I've also tried to develop myself spiritually. I read my devotionals and my Bible daily and that's been nearly five months. And I've attended church each week without fail at either Central worship or Magdalen Salisbury. My point is this, I know that there's still gonna be people that are not happy with this. But are we concerned with earth or are we concerned with grudges? I don't know. Are we more concerned with redemption or are we more concerned with condemnation? I don't know. But here's what I can tell you. Here's what I can affirm, and affirm means showing or expressing a strong belief. Now here's what I believe. I believe we have a great board. We got two teachers, Mrs. Ralph and Mrs. Pew, spent 30 years in education educating law students. Got Mrs. Hitchens, who spent four years attending board meetings before she even decided that because she wouldn't make sure she was well-informed. Got Mrs. Isler, who represents 20% of the board, although brown and black people represent 50% of people in law. You don't think she can come in here with a bad attitude, but now every time I see her, she's nothing but a lady. And Red Naples doesn't have a relative in law, but he's got several people to call him Papa and Uncle and everything else. And, you know, he saw the earth and sometimes he says what's on his sleeve and it always come out right, but you can't question his heart. So I can tell you, all of you, I appreciate you. Because you kept believing in me and you saw potential in me where other people wouldn't shoot blame and speak less there. Here's another thing I believe, I believe we have a great leadership team, many of them are here tonight. And I know we have great educators, I know we have a great support staff and I 100% without a doubt know that we have great students. So for me, the last five months have been more than ticking boxes, it's been about transformation. You got a decision to make with something like that happens in your life, you can let it break you or you can let it make you. And I prefer to believe that I was broken and blessed all the same way. I told the community that I was on the threshing floor and, you know, on the threshing floor, the chat gets separated from the wheat. The useless gets separated from the good and I believe that's what's happened to me. Threshing floor is not a comfortable place, it's a humbling place and guess what, it exposes your weaknesses and oftentimes it's done in public and it is very, very embarrassing at times. But there's a lot of growth that happens there. And I can tell you this, you can let it define you, your instinct, or you can let the threshing floor refine you and I think it's refining me and I thank the Law Board of Education for their belief in me and their belief in the power of redemption. I won't let you down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Larry Moore. Next, board participation, Ms. Ralph. You have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I was able to attend literacy night at Mileila and it was an absolute wonderful experience. I am known to be a little tardy and I'm afraid that I missed storytime, which I heard was very nice. But being able to see all the work displayed in the hall by all of the students and watching the students come up to the tables and get their free prizes and it was just a wonderful night and I thank you for inviting me.
Thank you. Ms. Pew?
Yes, I was in my house today a lot, which I'm not usually inside, saw, heard a lot of the news. There's a lot of really bad things going on in this world. I mean, some of them natural disasters, but there's also a lot of mean things going on in this world. And I just think we all need to take time to count our blessings, that we live in a community such as this that will reach out and help others when they need it. I know myself, we were in quite a crisis situation a year and a half ago and we need to appreciate the love we have in this community and it's right through the district. I've been in all of the schools over the last two weeks and they're all happy places and I thank you all for that.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Down in Florida, you mean North Carolina, those places there, just some hard people. But yet, when something like this happens, they're right there helping one another. I'm very impressed with the heart that the people have. In this school here, what I feel about these kids here, they're my kids, all of them. And I'm gonna look out for every one of them. I mean, if you don't fuss about it, you can go ahead. But I feel that all these kids have potential. Now I'm gonna work as hard as I can to make sure that they achieve that potential and they have what they need to get it done. And if you wanna make me mad, what you do is you attack my kids, when you attack my kids.
What's a parent?
Good, I'm bad. But the thing is...
Don't do that.
But no, the thing, I'm not addressing you. The thing is...
He's making a public statement, sir.
Well, the thing is, you know good deed goes unpunished and I know that. So if you want to punish the people in this room, please do, feel free to do it.
Thank you. Ms. Isler?
I'm used to getting yelled at. Well, with that being said, if everyone has... I'm kind of lost for words, I just cannot believe that we are experiencing what we are experiencing. That's okay, cuz all things are gonna work together for our good. And I just want to, as a board member, you guys already know this staff part over here, you already know how I feel, you guys do great jobs. Now, you know, whenever you guys need us to support you, as long as you're going in the right direction, you know, we got your back. All of our staff, support staffs everywhere, you know? So I'm not gonna even try to sit here and try to defend anything or whatever. I'm just gonna continue to support you guys and tell you what great jobs you do. And then when you don't do such a great job, we come together, we talk about it, we fix what our problems are and we move forward. Law School District is about moving forward on a positive note. And I appreciate all of you who have that same mindset and you come to work every day and that's one of your main goals. I greatly appreciate it. I see our students and I know these kids from our pre-K up to the high school, they're my kids too. As some, you know, some may say, you know, I represent all kids, all kids. And I'm very excited and happy to be a member of this community here in law. As was everywhere, every place has their quirks and whatnot, but this place, I'm proud to be a resident here. I am proud to be a member on this board and I am proud of our students. We have, over the years, there's been great milestones that we've accomplished. And then, like I said, when we come short, we come together, we try to work that thing out and figure out how to do it better the next time. So with that being said, everyone, continue doing the great jobs that you're doing. You make my heart glad when you, you know, do what you do, you put your heart in it, you make me happy. Make me glad to continue to be a part of this. This is why I've done it for so many years. As it's been known, we don't get paid to do this. This is something we do from our hearts. I speak for Sabrina, this is what I do from my heart. Because I could be somewhere else on these nights. And when our students have things, our events, our athletics, our educational pieces, I could choose to be somewhere else. But I love this district, I appreciate all of you who, you know, put yourselves pour into it to make it what it is. Like I said, anything that we have that we come short, we know how to come together, reason and work on it. So continue, all of you and our parents and other community members who support us and support our kids, greatly appreciate it. So let's continue to shoot for, up here is where positive is, we can continue to shoot that as our target and go beyond. Law's a great place and I've been in other areas, I've been in other school districts as an employee and none of us are perfect, but I know one thing I can say about law, we strive to make the mark. So continue. And I appreciate you all. Once again, as I said, be safe, love on each other, cuz we don't know what tomorrow may bring. We're very fortunate, as someone mentioned about Florida, that could be Law Delaware. And thanks be unto God, it's not. And so let's keep those people lifted in prayer, happy places, whatever it is that you do in your spiritual life, wherever that is. Send positive vibes towards those right now who are experiencing trauma. And that's all I have for...
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank each board member for wanting to be on a school board. It is not easy. I keep up with and I'm in contact with other school board members in other school districts. And it's not an easy, it's not an easy job. And it's like Dr. Larry Moore said, I attended meetings for four years, never missed a meeting. In fact, I haven't missed a meeting in 16 years, any kind of meeting as far as with the school board. I'll miss my first function this year in May because I have a granddaughter that graduates from another school district. So I won't be here for our school graduation, but Ms. Isler will take my spot that night. So, and my main reason for starting, as a graduate from this school district, out of 16 family members that have graduated from this school district, including my mother, that is long gone, I just decided after my children graduated from here to become more involved in the school district. here to become more involved in the school district. That's why I started attending board meetings. I took notes and I learned every staff member that was in the district, many that's sitting out here have been to my home before, uh, because you graduated with my children. And, but I learned each staff member and what you did and learned about the grants within our district, the financing of our district. And unless you're involved and when you become fresh on a school board, it will take you a year or more to understand the financing. It's not that you can just take it from here and take it from there. Um, we're told like where it's to go. So anyway, I encourage all that's sitting out here this evening to continue to come to the board meetings, to learn about the school district, because it's not overnight, but to strive for the best for this school district. Because we have done a lot of great things here and we will continue and we're gonna even get better and better. So that's, I'm off my soapbox now. So I'm gonna continue on and now we're going to move on to the financial report.
Laura Horsey, I'm the Director of Finance. I have just a quick update from, uh, August, actually. Um, we've submitted our financial position report, we completed our mass pay update for our ten-month employees. Um, submitted the certificate of necessity application to the Department of Education. The opportunity fund application was also approved and the safety and security fund application was approved. We implemented a new time and attendance system through frontlines that will eliminate paper time sheets and reduces the burden on our payroll staff. And we held our citizen budget oversight committee meeting on September 16th. On September, um, we spent the remaining state funds that were ending on September 30th. Those funds we would have lost if we didn't have them spent, they would have reverted back to the state. Um, same thing with our ESTER funds, they were fully obligated by September 30th. Again, otherwise they wouldn't have reverted back to the federal government. And we completed the September 30th unit count. Um, just to overall summary, our total enrolling increased by fifteen, we now have 2,544 students. And our Division One units increased by 4.26, we now have 189.98 units, which determines our staffing. Um, and then that's just some detail of our, uh, changes. Uh, nothing really stuck out as far as, you know, a big increase or a big decrease here or there, they were kinda like offsetting each other. Um, so just having that there for your information. Some things we have coming up, we have our local funds audit for FY23, I have a quarterly fund bill report due later soon. Our positions reconciliation, now that our September 30th unit count is completed, will be done in October. And I anticipate having a class size waiver for the board in November, if we need it. And we also have a mental health staff report that will be due to Department of Education. This is a snapshot of our reserve and local fund, uh, by month in comparison to where we were last year, so we're just, uh, following the trend so far, but just a good sign. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No.
No questions? No. No, thank you.
Um, before we move on, I just want to, and you have a seat, Mrs. Horsey, I don't wanna hold you up with that. But, um, in January, myself and Mrs. Horsey will begin, uh, sharing with the public at board meetings, how we assessment, uh, how we project it impacting Sussex County residents. As you guys know, there's reassessment going on in Kent County that has been finished. Reassessment is supposed to be finished in Sussex County, uh, in June 2025, July 2025. So in January, we're all to have some better projections to see how, um, it can, how we can expect it to impact us here in Sussex County. Um, just real quick, it's supposed to be revenue mutual and we'll explain that more as we get closer to January. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business, uh, the second reading of policy J I H C Weapon Detection Screening Program as submitted and found on the district website in the Board of Education Policy section and as found at the Laurel School District site. This policy was available for review by the community at the Laurel School District buildings and on the district website. Do I have a first?
So moved.
Second? First, Mrs. Pew, I believe. Second, Mrs. Isler. Roll call vote, Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Mrs. Isler.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
And Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
So approved. New business, school choice, recommend approval of school choice as a group.
So moved.
First, Mrs. Pew.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Nichols. Roll call vote, Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
And Ms. Isler.
Approved.
So approved. Recommend approval of school choice as submitted.
So moved.
First by Mr. Nichols, second by Mrs. Pew.
Mm-hmm.
Roll call vote, Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
And Ms. Isler.
Approved.
So approved. Fundraisers, recommend approval of fundraisers as a group.
So moved.
First, Mrs. Pew.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Nichols. Roll call vote, Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
And Ms. Isler.
Approved.
So approved. Recommend approval of fundraisers as submitted.
So moved.
First, Mrs. Isler.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Pew. Roll call vote, Mrs. Isler.
Approved.
Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
So approved. We have no rentals tonight, uh, professional trip, recommend approval of trip as submitted.
So moved.
First, Mrs. Pew.
So moved.
Second. Second, Mr. Nichols. Roll call vote, Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
And Ms. Isler.
Approved.
So approved. Uh, action on executive session items, personnel attachment A, professional. Do I have a first?
So moved.
First, Mr. Nichols. Second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Pew. Roll call vote, Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
I forgot.
Mr. And Ms. Isler.
Approved.
So approved. Personnel attachment B, support, recommend approving the personnel recommendations as listed in attachment B.
So moved.
First, Mrs. Pew.
So moved.
Second, uh, Mrs. Isler. Roll call vote, Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Mrs. Isler.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
So approved. Personnel attachment C, coaches, recommend approving the personnel recommendations as listed in attachment C.
So moved.
First, uh, Mrs. Isler, second, Mr. Nichols. Roll call vote, Mrs. Isler.
Approved.
Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
And Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
So approved. Cafe, recommend approving the personnel recommendations as listed in attachment D.
So moved.
First, Mrs. Isler.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Pew. Roll call vote, Mrs. Isler.
Approved.
Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
And Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
So approved. Okay, the next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November the 25th at 7:00 P M. right here. And before I forget, everyone, don't forget about, um...
20th.
Did I say, the 20th? It's 20th?
Yeah.
The 20th? Oh, okay. The 20th of November. Uh, before I forget, homecoming is next weekend, so please come out for homecoming. The parade will be Friday evening and then all-day festivities going on on Saturday, so don't forget it. All right, do I have motion? We adjourn.
So moved.
First, Mrs. Isler.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Nichols. Roll call vote, Mrs. Isler.
Approved.
Mr. Nichols.
Approved.
Ms. Ralph.
Approved.
And Mrs. Pew.
Approved.
So approved.
So moved.
We adjourn at 7:41 P M. And thank you, thank everyone for coming.
Thank you.